Meeting is now open. Do we have a need for executive session?
Yeah, I'd like to talk about two personnel matters relating to the rec department and the clerk's office.
We don't sign anything?
Nope.
We're going to executive session for those after our meeting.
One second.
Need for discussion? All of the members say aye.
Aye.
All of the posts say noye. We have a amended agenda. The GIS mapping service is not going to be discussed tonight, and we have a question from the town clerk that we have to acknowledge we received. I move that we accept your agenda as amended.
Second up.
For discussion? All the favor say aye.
Aye.
The post say noye. Act on the select board meetings of August 19, 2020. Are there any changes, additions, or corrections to those minutes?
After you sign off on that, I have a new set of August 5 minutes which incorporate Dave Mills' correction from the last meeting in which he suggests in his motion that if Randy wishes to serve on the rec committee, we could expand it for that purpose.
Those will have been signed, right, John?
Yes, but we have to re-sign them because the paging was off. It was a signature page.
Alright.
I'll circulate them around. Here you go, Joe. They're the same minutes as last time, but that one small change at the top.
You want me to sign either?
If you would, yeah. Well, I'll sign them. And I'll get your signature, Dave, whenever's convenient for you.
Okay.
But I want you to keep your distance.
Yeah, I remember you had a toothache.
Next, are your orders. Are there any questions on your orders?
I noticed that gravel, West Creek, with the hollow, $20,000, a little bit more. Is that just some improvement to the road, or was that some storm damage?
It's the shoulder work that happened after the resurfacing. So that was about three and a half miles of new surfacing that they have to build up to that level.
Joe, will you sign one, please? Any other questions on your orders?
Yeah, the property taxes to Chittenden, is that up on the bracket?
Yes.
That is?
Yes, we do have it in current use, so they're much lower than they otherwise would be, but we do have to pay based on the current use value.
And then I know we always have sludge removal on here. I've never seen it from the city of Rutland, though.
We have a company that removes our sludge and then a separate company, a separate place where we deliver the sludge.
Oh, okay.
City of Rutland takes it and processes our sludge. You don't see that on their marketing brochures, you know, sludge cabinet.
Commander's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The main point of information that's new on the coronavirus update is that, one, the fire department distributed face masks which were donated to this town by the state of Vermont in an event this past Saturday, and I'd like to thank Chief Hempel for overseeing that. We did not distribute all of the available ones, and so we're going to talk about a good way to get the rest of them out to people who could use them or who want them. These are cloth face masks. The other point is that hopefully the next meeting we do will be Zoom capable with as many selectmen as want to stay here in person able to do so, but with visitors able to appear virtually on a monitor that we're going to have set up by our friends at Vermont Digital. So that material should be coming tomorrow, I'm told. With regard to COVID-19 grant opportunities, the town has submitted its LGER grant application seeking reimbursement for the cost of this equipment and for all other COVID-related expenses incurred to date. And the town clerk has submitted an application for grant funding for municipal record digitization, of course, the focus being on making things like land records accessible remotely. We go back now to about 2012 with our land records on digital availability, and this would take us another 12 years back down to about 2000. So that's good for the folks who wouldn't need to come in as often to examine our land records in person. The Depot Hill Sewer Pump Station project, the town plans to sign a contract with Casella, the low bidder, soon with work anticipated to begin in November. On Thursday, August 27th, the town's highway crew performed some temporary repairs to the deck of Depot Hill Road Covered Bridge. The town will continue to seek funding for design engineering services and then construction and rehabilitation work to preserve this historic bridge for many years to come. We will meanwhile take steps to discourage speeding or excess weight loads through all of our traffic covered bridges. I remember Dave had the point that we should talk with the school once they're up and running about why they need to go through that bridge when they have maybe one student on the other side of it that could be dropped and walked. So we'll look into that as well. I think we've put some signage up and some cones to kind of slow, try to slow people down as they go through that bridge. The highway crew is wrapping up work on its grant-funded stone line ditching projects on Sugar Hollow, Goat Farm, and Barnard Roads. The town has completed its planned Class III road line striping for the year, and the state has done its Class II road line striping. We've had positive feedback from a couple people on Adams Road, including our videographer who writes, "John, I was delighted to find the bright yellow center lines painted on Adams Road this week. Many thanks to you, the Select Board and Pittsburgh Road Crew. My wife and I really appreciate it." Bob Miller, Adams Road. Whoops. Thank you. Crack ceiling was also done recently by contractor up on Sangamon Road and almost all of Cornhill Road, spending the first, the full two-day allotment of time that they were given. The town's annual external audit will begin Tuesday here in the conference room and be done by the firm of Sullivan and Powers. Stay tuned for updates on that. The deadline for submission to this fall's Fall Newsletter is September 15th. There's a summary in the Select Board packets regarding the input we received in response to our inquiry about whether residents want to see changes in the form and format of these newsletters. This summary was shared with Lee Cars at her request. Response was light, but generally those people who received that inquiry in the newsletter seem to be fans of continuing to receive the newsletter. But maybe we want to discuss it at a warned article at the town meeting next year. It's a possibility for wider input. Veterans Day falls on Wednesday, November 11th, and my question for the board, just for a quick raising of hands, is would you like to convene that event this year?
Because a lot of it could have social distancing.
Yeah. I think the outdoor portion could be done easily. We just would have to dispense with the coffee hour indoors afterwards where everybody rubs elbows.
Yeah.
They'll play your room out there.
Yeah, of course, there's a lot of room.
Yeah, we can probably get a hot pot of coffee out there.
If it isn't cold, it'll keep the crowd from getting big anyway.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay. So we'll proceed on that basis. Thank you. Census, I urge all Pittsburgh residents to fill out the quick, easy, and secure 2020 census. First of all, it's the right thing to do. Second, from a more selfish perspective, it helps determine our state and town's access to federal funding and support and can determine how Pittsburgh is represented in the state legislature. So I appreciate the fact that the school has agreed to send home reminders to all the schoolchildren for their parents. And Shelley at the library has done a fantastic flyer, which I think might be in tonight's materials, reminding people of the various reasons why it's important to do it. The numbers I've seen so far is that Rutland's doing fairly well among Vermont towns, Vermont counties, Rutland County, and Pittsburgh's doing fairly well within Rutland County. So those are two good pieces of information, but we can always do better. Our current rate of completion is about 60, 65%, and so I know we can do better. So I hope we all will do our best if we haven't done that already. Railroad crossing work update. The, there's an email thread that I had with the contractor. The track work has been done over these past two road closed weekends. They still are awaiting the full complement of concrete panels so they can install those alongside the railroad crossing. They might be able to do this with daily one-lane closings. Perhaps, he says, they might ask for another half-day Saturday closure to wrap that up, but it hasn't been decided yet, and they'll keep in touch with us about that. Finally, the town offices will be closed Monday, September 7th, and observance of Labor Day.
Any comments or questions on John's report?
And observance of Mr. Hooker's birthday.
Oh. A happy birthday.
He'll be 79.
I think you're probably.
99, is that what you said?
I'm even older than I am.
Alright.
39.
Select board member remarks. Any remarks tonight? Public comment, we have no public, so I can't, I don't think there are any comments.
There we do it.
Wait, he's here for a minute.
Well, okay. Well, he's still public.
So we're supposed to go around and get rid of some people here. Bring in Lieutenant Dion.
Yes. Lieutenant Dion.
Yes.
Are you ready to join us?
Sure.
I hope I haven't butchered your name.
No.
Okay, good. Come on in, have yourself a seat, and we'll be hearing what you have to say on, I think, racial matters and the Vermont State Police's approach to them, right?
Well, it's, yeah, I mean, that was certainly in that community letter that was sent out to the Select Board. Obviously, the state police has a position on that, which was stated in that letter. That comes from folks that are higher up than me. Obviously, I did not draft the letter. I sent it out to communities that are in my particular area here out of the Rutland barracks. They're willing to tackle those, you know, in any community that has any issues pertaining to that. And that community letter goes beyond that as well, and it's just issues in general that the communities are experiencing, whether it be racial, whether it be anything else, and how the state police is certainly interacting with those communities and those community members, and whether we're doing good things, bad things, anything of that nature. And, you know, obviously, what spearheaded this whole approach is we're kind of changing the way we've always done business in the state police. We're going to be a little bit more community oriented. We're kind of melding into more of a community policing model, which is what you see in a lot of cities. A little bit tougher here in Vermont because it's a rural area. We'll see how that goes. But obviously, I don't think there's any bad that can come out of being more engaged with the community than what we've been in the past. So that's essentially where we're at right now. So we're just trying to get feedback as best we can as to how to accomplish that mission with, with all the communities that we serve, which is quite a few, so.
And for many communities here, the primary law enforcement.
Yes.
For Pittsburgh, you're not because we have a police department, but we certainly do have after-hours and support from the Vermont State Police. That's why we thought it'd be good to give you an opportunity to let us know what your thinking is and what the Vermont State Police is thinking about.
Yep. So that's, that's what we're going to be doing. And we just want to be a little bit more engaged, well, a lot more engaged than what we have been in the past with, with the communities we serve, so.
Any comments or questions on Lieutenant Dion's remarks?
What kinds of examples of outreach do you think you'll be doing in Rutland County to deal with issues of concern?
Well, if it's a specific concern, obviously, we tackle those head-on, but in general, outreach is going to be for us, it's just getting to know our communities better. So instead of, you know, in the past, when I started in 2006, for example, the typical day for me as a, as a uniform trooper right out of the academy was to go out and stop vehicles for violations and then respond to any calls for service that we had. And if it was a, if it was a call that involved an arrestable offense and you make the arrest and you do the paperwork, and that's essentially what I did, day in and day out. And it was just a circular motion. That's, that's, that's all we did. With this model, it's going to be less of an emphasis on, let's go and just do that every day and just aimlessly go about the county, stopping cars and responding to calls for service. It's going to be more targeted where, say, I'll assign a trooper, okay, today you're going to be in the town of Pittsburgh, okay. Typically, it's going to be in towns that don't have a primary police department. That's how we're going to operate. So we could be in the town of Clarendon, you know, I'll assign a trooper. You're going to be in Clarendon for the day, you know. It could be on a day, or it may very well be on a day when they have a particular event going on. It could be a Select Board meeting, could be anything. The point is, is we want to interact more with the citizens in each of these communities. It just makes more sense because we're not, I don't think we get enough feedback, whether it be positive or negative, about what we're doing. And quite honestly, you know, we're public servants. We should be doing this. We haven't been doing it all along. We've kind of just been doing our own thing. And that's just our way of wrapping ourselves in the community better. It's only going to enhance relationships, and that's the goal of this, is to enhance the relationships, make sure people are comfortable talking to us about the issues they're experiencing, whether they be good or bad. And hopefully, if they're bad issues, we can address them and make it better.
Do you have any sense how the academy is changing training for new police officers and troopers?
This is pretty new. So the academy, you know, here in town, obviously, it's servicing all the town officers as well as state police officers. So as to, they are overhauling their system. As to the specifics of it, I don't have it because I'm not in charge of that. I can say that this is a pretty big change from where we've been in the past, so to speak. So, and this is just being instituted this year. It's going to take time, obviously. But, you know, I would imagine the academy's going to follow suit, and they're probably going to change some of their curriculum just, just to address how we're going to tackle things, you know, in a more modern way. Yep.
I'll point out that in tonight's packet, I've included some material, I think, from VLCT, which is stating their current or new document entitled Perspectives on Police Reform. I really haven't had a chance to closely look at it, but maybe the board members will want to digest it. And if you have any follow-up, I can certainly forward it on if you'd like to Vermont, Lake City, some towns.
Great. Good. Thanks for coming in.
Okay. Well, thank you, folks, for sure.
Thank you.
Let's move on to.
Lieutenant. Lieutenant John.
Lieutenant.
Review of the town planning commission.
I have a quote on my card.
Mr. Winslow.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appear here per the whole committee to present this energy plan that was requested by the selectmen in July of 2019. I think you all have a copy of the document. I can tell you there was a lot of hours put in on this, even though it's only two pages. It was on purpose to make sure it was direct at what the Select Board requested. Just to highlight, we touched on things like efficiency Vermont, energy codes of standards for buildings, strategies to reduce energy usage. We did include a piece on solar projects with two specific things, including a site plan to be established with visual protection before construction, and a written plan for decommissioning with funds set aside and a specific amount ahead of construction, as well as bonding for the project that goes on in town. Those were the two things we had in. We also encouraged residents to look for renewable sources, also in new construction, and we also highlighted some of the future with natural gas and the ability it might have for our town. We also encourage weatherization programs that are offered by the state, also encourage things with new building construction, and also some a little bit with electric cars as well as some parking ride locations. What the committee has asked me to do today is point out what we feel is the most important thing on this list, and that is number six. I'll read it to you, just the first line. "We recommend the Select Board call on the state of Vermont to deregulate the electric supply in the state. Currently, it's monopoly. There's only one source, and it is excessively more costly than the other surrounding states, including New York, which has had deregulation for about a dozen years. We feel that will do the most for Pittsburgh residents when it comes to changing the cost of power and electricity. As we move towards these other electric sources, it seems only logical that citizens can have a choice in who they buy from, and they're not told to buy from one organization that I believe now is owned by a Canadian company. So it's not even an American-owned company." With that, I'll take any questions if anyone has any.
Just to emphasize that you've taken steps in the plan to point out that these are recommendations, nothing binding, and we're not including, we're not amending the town plan, correct?
That is correct, and that is per the selectman's request as of July 2019. So that's all this is, is a guideline, but it's what you requested from us, so we're submitting it to you. For either acceptance or not.
Another question is just, at some point, there was a subcommittee established to assist the planning commission, I think, wasn't the energy plan? My question is, do we need to disband that subcommittee, or maybe it's already fallen into disuse?
Did I correct you, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
That subcommittee was a subcommittee to help with the town plan.
Oh, I see.
And it kind of disbanded itself. So you might want to formally do it, but I don't think they've had anything going on for quite a while, and it, it kind of petered out towards the time when we submitted the town plan, I believe.
Okay.
Mark, we appreciate you. Do you want to hear something?
No, just going to ask, are you asking for a board vote to approve it?
I'll wind out. I'm just presenting to the board, and the committee wanted me to come in person and do it, and so.
Has there been more movement towards deregulation from other towns?
No. But in our research, especially having our neighbors right to New York being deregulated, it was fairly easy to compare bills, and it's a full 30% savings if you're in a deregulated economy. And there are 12 states right now in the United States that are deregulated. And fortunately, when New York next door, when you can look side by side, their power cost is about six cents a kilowatt hour and they have a carrying charge of about a nickel. So it's about 11 cents. Maybe you should go home and look at your bill and see what it is. It's a lot more than that, so.
Do they have competition within physical areas? In other words, there's Pepsi and Coke delivering electricity in the same town, or is it just because New York's a big state, they're different regions?
What it appears, John, is like Green Mountain Power, we get a carrying cost, and what they give over there is about five and a half cents to carry it, take care of the lines, and distribute it. There are, I think, at least a half dozen different companies that you can make your decision, each individual person can buy or make a contract with. And it's vastly different in cost, but most of the time, we saw it going from a nickel to six to seven cents. So it's, makes for a tremendously lower electric bill, and we think the time is right for us to have that opportunity, and we encourage the selectmen to at least put something forward to the Vermont Legislature, because it seems to me, and we've had some comments from solar people that have been in and some others saying, this does need to happen. So we feel that's one of the most important things that came out of this from our work.
Well, Mark, we appreciate all the hard work and time that the planning commission has put in on this. My hats are off to you guys. You're doing a great job.
Thank you. And if you have any other questions even after tonight, feel free to ask us about it, but whenever you feel you need to act on it, you can. It's there for you.
Thank you.
Mark, that would, in order for other companies to, I guess you'd call it broker electricity, that would, that would take some state action, wouldn't it, to allow that or to set it up?
That's exactly correct. And that's why we encourage the Select Board to lobby our legislators in the state to look at this option. We feel the time is here, and as people move towards it, we need to do that. I did notice at one time when I was looking at the New York website, one of the places that was offering energy for sale in New York was Green Mountain Power. So I looked again, and I couldn't find it, but I saw it. So they come and go, but there's, I think it's time that, you know, we have six choices. And for my brother, watching his dairy farm electric costs drop substantially once he was able to purchase his own, it's very, very important, especially for commercial customers.
Thank you. Will Lisa call?
Lisa will be calling or coming in, I think, at 7:00, person.
Yeah, let's go back to old business. You got any update on, any more response to COVID-19?
No, that's, I think I covered it in the manager's report.
Recreation director, Nicole.
Yeah, the good news is.
Thanks, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
The good news is we had a good, healthy application pool of 12. We interviewed five, and this is, by we, I mean a committee that we set up consisting of myself, Randy Adams, and three members of the Recreation Committee who asked to be involved, and we had Bill Moore from Brandon's Rec Department help us for most of the process. And so after the five interviews, we had further discussions and now find ourselves with three finalists. And we have a tentative ranking among them. So I'm hoping that I will be able to make an offer to the consensus preference in the next few days. And obviously, I prefer not to name names because Plan A doesn't always work out. And so I will certainly be notifying you once it's been done, and we can certainly invite this person to come in and get introduced, and it's no one, or her.
Now, there was some consideration of maybe adding some other duties to that.
Yes, and I think that's next on the agenda. We can jump right into that.
Yeah, go ahead.
There was a memo I did, you know, pointing out that there's been at least some opinion expressed on the board that maybe we should look at the Brandon model for a combination rec director and economic development director. And so we have asked all these candidates whether they'd be willing to spend some of their time doing that. They all said yes. At the most recent committee meeting at which we kind of scored our finalists, I did get some, I would call it pushback from the rec committee, saying, look, we have a great program. We don't want to jeopardize it by giving it short shrift. And second, Randy was certainly very busy at all times, even before, you know, his illness. And so that, they hope that the board and I will keep that in mind as we think about stretching the duties so that we don't ignore our fundamental knitting, so to speak, which is recreational programming. So I'm happy to hear what the board might have to say about the proper split between rec duties and economic development duties, whether you want to keep it fairly informal so that there can be some seasonality to it. For example, I would imagine in January, February, there'd be more time to devote to that kind of work, whereas spring, summer, even fall, there might be less. to that kind of work, whereas spring, summer, even fall, there might be less work available. So maybe a rigid split of, you know, 75%, 25% might not be realistic. It could be that we have a goal that maybe a certain percentage of time over a full year be devoted to this and that, but I'd be happy to hear what the board has to say about it.
I don't know if it's necessary.
I, from what I understand from Bill Moore, he does about 75 rec, 25 development.
Right.
And from what I've gathered from him, you know, they basically work together. They fit together quite well. So I think, I mean, we certainly don't need to make it rigid that, you know, every day you need to spend 75, 25, but over the course of a year, if you plan it out so it's 75, 25, I think that's doable. Because like you said, in the winter, when there's less things going on, they can be more, you know, they may do 75% development and 25% rec for a few months. And then come summer, it switches back where they're doing 90% rec work and only 10% development work. So I don't think we need to have a rigid daily or weekly schedule, but I think overall, the 75, 25 thing, in my opinion, would work. And I think it's, we have an opportunity right now to try this. If we find it doesn't work, we can always go to a full-time rec, have the person go to full-time rec, but I think it's worth giving it a shot and see if we can get some new businesses into our town. Because ultimately, if we don't have anybody, any place for anybody to work here, we aren't going to have people living here, and we aren't going to need a rec department. So I think the two work together.
I appreciate those remarks. The members of the Rec Committee might go one step further and say, "Well, to compare Pittsburgh and Brandon is not quite right because we have a rec area that needs oversight, and programming might be a little more ambitious." Because in Brandon, there is a Chamber of Commerce that helps with a lot of their big events, and who knows, maybe Kelly Guyard might have something to say about the two towns. Do you have any thoughts on that, Kelly?
I'm playing the fifth.
I'm sorry? You played the fifth, okay. But anyway, I'm just trying to advocate for the Rec Committee that felt a little worried that we might not do the same great job that we've always done.
We could start with 20.
Well, that's in, and nobody's ever said that it should be in lieu of rec. It should never, rec has to come first. It's just that, like, when there is downtime, we do need somebody working on economic development, and they do tie in, so.
Yeah, I agree with you. So with that understanding that we can be a little bit flexible about the seasonality of it and use that as an aspirational goal, I'll certainly include that with whatever offer that we are making to the candidate. The other question would have to do with start date. I think we all agree that if we could put that off for a period of months, that would be a good idea. I have just had a preliminary talk with one of the candidates at least, who has said that that would not be a particular problem to start in maybe December or January, like we've talked about. Is that agreeable to you folks?
Makes sense.
And we also have to, of course, hope that there's programming in the spring and summer. I certainly hope so.
Yeah.
If not, we'll be one hell of a great economic development...
There you go.
...approach.
Okay.
Great, thank you for your input on that.
And just consider approving the postponed date.
Now, what about, in your memo, there was the 30,000 or 40,000 that came until January?
Yeah, we can talk about that now. I also, in my memo, said that conversation can probably wait, and we can actually see what the numbers are by the end of the fiscal year, because some of it will have to do with the kind of health insurance the new person needs, a single plan or a three times more expensive family plan, and that might contribute to the amount of money we've got. And it'll give you time to think about and maybe assess what monies we might need to have some funding for their Economic Development Office. And meanwhile, the Rec Committee might make some more progress on costing out some of their capital projects that they might like to see some money go toward, like the new fence at the rec. So I think the bottom line is, the fiscal year goes through June, and so much closer to then, we could probably put this back on the agenda for you to decide on one of three courses, really. Give some or all of that money to rec capital needs, give some or all of that money to economic development, or leave the money in the general fund and bulk it up to get to levels that we all want to see, that give us more breathing room in the future. So those are all three options that you could pursue, one versus the other, or a combination of all.
Okay.
Right now, we'll go on to consider approving the postponed date for the Humane Society coin drop. I think you're looking for October 3rd.
Yes, and I think the board had no problem going forward and authorizing it, and she just wanted permission so that she could then talk to V-Trans about the new date. I think she's already talked with them.
General consensus is good.
Don't need it? Okay.
It's my general consensus when you do that.
Okay, very good. We can talk about the delegate, the ELCT Town Fair Business Meeting, if you'd like.
Let's do that.
For 11 or 12 years, I've been happy to serve and represent the town in that discussion of their legislative policy, which gets discussed and adopted as kind of their lobbying document for legislature interactions, and I'd be more than happy to do that if you'd like.
Oh, congratulations.
I think we're happy to live in right now.
I think that was the consensus.
Okay, I'll sign up and let them know.
All right. Next is...
Dispatch costs.
Dispatch costs.
I've been warning you for years.
Yeah, and we've heard different things. I mean, from this memo, it kind of looks like they've fleshed out the numbers, which they will ease us into over three or four years, starting at 4,000, easing up to 14,000, 15,000 eventually, based on, I guess, something like, based on something like $59 a phone call, which seems pretty darn high. Have we lost anybody? Are you all there on the speakerphone? Hello?
We don't have the music yet.
I don't know.
It happens usually 40 minutes and so.
Welcome, and thank you for choosing Free Conference Call. If you are the host, press R please under your pin. Thank you. There is one other participant in the conference. Please announce yourself.
Brent, Brent House.
Hey, Brent. Oh, I think I was just signed off for a minute there without my consent. We're back in action. Are you there as well, Dave Mills?
Yeah, I am. I was just texting Alicia to say you kicked me off.
I tried to tell Dave that Alicia would not cut him off this time, but...
But you're just avoiding away from us.
Springer, just in time, you're next.
I, you know, I was, I was wondering if that was a question, but I'm glad that I made a little bit of that question.
If you'd speak up the best you can, we're on a rickety old speakerphone.
Or, that was my next question, making sure everyone's hearing okay. So, yeah, the, I agree. Board members obviously have a recommendation that was made on the bids that were received for the Salt Shed project. We received bids going on two weeks, a little more than two weeks ago now. We received a single bid for that work, and the bidder was Casella Construction. And I believe that, to be no coincidence, that they're also the same firm working potentially on the Deep Oak Hill Pump Station project. In terms of pricing, there was a significant increase over what we had initially estimated for a budget for the project. Much of this, I want to attribute to the fact that this is, for those of you that are more familiar with the project or not, it's more of a specialty product. This is a steel frame structure that has a fabric enclosure, and with that, really, what we've seen, at least over the course of the last five months or so, since everything has been, oh, sure, this pandemic mode, is those specialty products are coming at a premium. You know, the nuts and bolts that used to be able to get for, you know, a couple pennies here and there are now doubling in cost, and lucky to find some of those products even around. I would imagine that everyone has noticed that one way or another, whether it be decking or recreational equipment, these types of things are really at premium now. And that is somewhat to be attributed in the price of the project that they came in at. Having said that, you know, there's also, it's an estimate, it's an estimate. You know, while we do everything we can to make sure we're capturing all the cost and all the work that's associated in developing an estimate, there's components that really we don't have control over at the time, and it's workload that contractors are experiencing, availability of workers, any number of things. So, you know, having said that, that analysis that has been provided makes recommendations that the board award the contract to Casella. We have, and I guess I appreciate the board being flexible. We were intending to come a week or two ago to have this discussion, but given the value of the bid in that it was above our estimate, definitely required some additional considerations and some additional conversations with V-Trans. The V-Trans project manager and I, John, had had a number of conversations regarding the town had committed, or should say that the grant funds that are available to the town are more than sufficient to cover this amount. Obviously, it's more than our initial estimate, but, you know, again, it's, an estimate is an estimate, and this being a specialty product is somewhat of a, you know, I don't want to see it anomaly, but I think we're in somewhat strange times, given the fact that, you know, I'm calling in here by a phone. So I'm happy to answer any questions, maybe provide additional feedback if I can, but yeah, I'll leave it to the board.
Can I start, Hank? Is it true, Brent, that V-Trans has concurred with your recommendation?
That is correct, John. That was part of the, you know, obviously part of the conversation. We're obviously all very concerned about cost and making sure that the town is getting a fair price for the product and the project that it's getting. So, yeah, the project manager from V-Trans did agree and has conferred with this one.
And that's despite the fact that V-Trans and the state will be paying 80% of the cost, correct?
That is correct, yes, sir.
Okay.
Have you built, or financed, or whatever, any more buildings like this in the state of Vermont, or is this the first one?
So, so this type of structure is, I don't want to say it, a very popular type product. If you were to go, you know, I'm somewhat more familiar with that as a county, but if you were to go down either road or going up this way, those structures are, it's a cheaper alternative. Many communities tend to, many communities, in my experience, up this way, again, have installed these types of structures, but they've done it through other funding sources. So this particular project is, I want to say, one of the, one of the particular funding sources through V-Trans. This is the first project that has gone through that route. The other funding, so there's three grants that are available for funding of this project. One I'm not, two of the funding sources I'm not that familiar with. There's one where I do know that this is the first time that particular product has been used.
And do you, and I realize Casella is the one building it, but do you know what the name of the company that's actually making the structure is?
At this point, I do not know their, you know, who their subcontractor is. We haven't, honestly, haven't gotten that far. I wanted to have, obviously have the board have these conversations and make sure they would be folks who are comfortable going forward, or I really circle back around with them.
At one point...
I mean, they're, I'm a farmer, so I get, there's, these things are used a lot in ag, and it's, to me, the price is way beyond anything that makes any sense whatsoever, but that's just my opinion. I mean, it's astronomical compared to what those type of buildings normally cost.
I would, at first, I get that same reaction from a number of different folks I talk to. I have, I am somewhat of that same opinion. What I will say is that, that there, that most of the, of the projects that I'm aware of, where the costs are substantially lower, those are projects where there's, a majority of the work is done by potentially volunteer or discounted labor, and it's not with the same level of quality control that the town is protected with when using, like, a V-Trans standard specification for a concrete block, as an example. You know, this structure is going to sit atop concrete block. There are a number of communities that have built it the same way. I would imagine you've seen this in agriculture as well, where they have the waste, it's called a waste block. Now, those waste blocks are generally waste concrete, so it is a product, you don't know what you're receiving. You may be getting different, you know, waste from the end of a truck that's coming one day versus the next day, and different mix designs, whereas with the, with V-Trans specified product, you're getting a quality-controlled, like, a mix in pure block, as opposed to something that maybe is a little more variable. So, again, with that, there's more control, you know, to really protect the town to get a, you know, to get a product that's definitely more, I don't want to say durable, but more guaranteed of a better product.
Well, more consistent. There you go. Yeah, okay.
I will just remind everybody that at the last meeting, we already approved the proposal from our construction inspection services firm, and that's going to be GPI, the same people who oversaw our sidewalk project down Arch and Pleasant Street, and they're ready to go, kind of the last step in this several-year process would be to approve a bid, and then we can get going as early as November. I think, I think November was the, was the break-in ground date, or that was the completion date, I should say. We're hoping to do it sooner than that, right, Brent?
Yes, sir. Yeah, John, that was, the intent here is to get going, if the board finds that agrees with our recommendation, then we would move forward with that contract signing. That work would begin as quickly as possible. The intent is to have this ready for this winter and allow the road crews to utilize the structure for the winter.
John, there are monies coming out of the highway.
Yeah, typically, when we're looking for, I'm sorry, Tom Hook... Yeah, typically, when we're looking for, I'm sorry, Tom Hooker asked about where the-
I thought we lost him, too.
Are you still there, everybody?
Yep, we got you now.
Okay. Tom Hooker was just asking where the local match comes from, and typically, when we're doing these highway-related projects, our policy has been to use the bridge replacement fund, which has, I think, more than $400,000 in it at present.
We had discussed that earlier.
Yeah.
So, John, our portion of this is going to be, what, close to 100 grand?
About, it's 20% of the 550,000, so 110, give or take.
Okay.
No.
No, we're all just looking at each other.
Everybody's deep silent, I think.
No, dead silence, which we don't have.
Yeah.
No, it's just so much money.
It's a lot of money, that's all.
Is the site ready for construction, or have they got a sand pile there right now?
There's a sand pile, but that can be moved pretty easily with big machines, some of which we can do, some of which the contractor can do.
How are we guaranteed to get all the materials if it's been, it's like a specialty material that's been hard to get because of COVID and all that? How do we-
It's a good question for Brent. Are we confident, Brent, that Casella is ready to roll? Do they have all the materials they would need?
They have, they have been, honestly, they, within the last week, they have been really pushing me to send me shop drawings, some middles, and other items that, yes, they're ready to go. You know, they're, so far as I, so far as I've heard in my conversations with them, there's been no notification or any sort of warning sign to say that they can't get those materials and those products.
And they would have researched, they would have researched their sources for the materials and subcontractors before bidding, right?
That's correct. Honestly, the timeline of construction is outlined in the bid, and they, had they not been able to meet that or had issue with those dates, then we should have been alerted already.
Okay. And the contractor is also expecting to be in town for this Depot Hill Sewer Project roughly the same time, correct? This fall?
That, I believe, you know, they have some, they have some open schedule time, so this project fit in nicely with their schedule on Depot Hill.
I think originally we were talking 50,000. I thought we were up to half a million.
And that may be reflected in their bid, maybe not?
Yeah, I would like to think that there's some efficiencies there, though, again, I haven't had that conversation, and they haven't shown me their cards yet. I'm sorry, I think I lost you.
We're still here.
We're still here.
You're here, yeah.
Okay, now I got you.
Get it on again.
Well, we certainly have committed to the state of Vermont that we're moving forward on. That was several years ago when we received the grants.
That happens if we wait a year.
I don't, yeah, I don't know that we jeopardize it by waiting a year, but I will tell you what Brent, I'm sorry, what V-Trans has said, because we had that email exchange. Bidding again this fall is unlikely to garner any better results. Rebidding in the spring may help with getting more bids, but there's no guarantee that they will be any better than the bid received.
This is a lot of money.
I did get confirmation, of course, from V-Trans that if we, for some reason, don't proceed with the project, then we'd have to reimburse them for all the grant funds they've given us thus far.
So, we're caught between a rock and a hard spot.
I know, we are kind of, we're some, right, tens of thousands in already, aren't we?
Yes.
Well, I guess the only thing that I can say, what numbers I know right now at 100, 110 grand, that's probably about what it would cost us if we were to do it on the cheap for ourselves. So, I'm not going to make the motion to do this because I don't necessarily, I think it's astronomical price-wise, but, you know, we do run the risk waiting that it'll cost us even more, I guess, is my only thought on that. So, I'm just throwing that out.
Against my better judgment, I'll make a motion if we accept the bid. Somebody second to that, we can open it up for discussion, I guess, right?
Yeah.
No seconds.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I will remember, and Joe will remember, we've had that same kind of difficult decision in the past-
We have, yeah.
-that 20% of what might be a wasteful project is still, in most cases, like the sidewalk was, and I think, as Dave has suggested, might be the case here, a good deal bottom line for our taxpayers. They're going to get a very good, reliable, durable, V-Trans-approved structure, which the highway crew will use for many years to come to make their operations more effective, more efficient use of material, less environmental damage, all for 110 or so thousand dollars.
And you got a half a million dollar.
Yeah.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, I guess.
The voters say no.
I'm not happy, but I guess-
I gotta say no, just in my nature, I gotta say nay.
The voter's 4-1 in favor. We put out the bid.
Brent, I'll be following up with you, and thanks for your presence tonight.
Thank you all very much for your time. Appreciate it, appreciate the questions and considerations. Have a great night.
Thanks, Brent.
Thanks, Brent.
Take care.
Lisa, you're out.
Lisa Wright, I've given them your memo and your follow-up, and so we're ready to talk about things, but not the GPS GIS stuff for tonight.
That was going to be my first question, other than how everybody's doing tonight, is, and can you hear me with this darn mask?
Oh, yeah. Dave's asking for you to either speak up, or you can get closer, or, you know, some of us who speak for long periods are taking masks off for that possibility, if you want, if you're comfortable doing that.
Yeah, it does muffle it. Can you hear me now, Dave?
I can hear you now.
Okay. So, my first question is, we were tentatively scheduled to talk about GIS mapping, as well as the conversion of Vision from Vision 6 to Vision 8, and my priority is the conversion of Vision to the new version of that program. And we were only pushing ahead with the GIS, making that decision sooner rather than later because we had hoped there might be some grant funds available after Helen compiled and got her quotes from Cots, and it was like 300 bucks left. So, we're not going to go very far with that. So, if it's okay with you, I'll touch on that with the discussion about Vision, but I think we should shelve the GIS thing. You've got enough on your plate tonight, and I need to get a little more information rounded up so you can make that decision. I don't know if you want to talk about your policy about making that stuff available on GIS in general, though, because, you know, if the town's decision is that due to privacy concerns, you don't really want to do that, then it's probably wasting my time and the town's money for me to research that and what that's going to cost.
It's been the policy in the past to take privacy into account when that was pitched by the listers several years ago, but as in this new COVID environment, when we're trying to facilitate remote access to records, given that this is all public record information, I thought maybe the board might want to at least have the discussion with you about it.
Absolutely, and I would, I would agree with what John said with the statewide parcel mapping particularly, and that information was actually available online in the form of the Vermont Natural Resources Atlas. I don't know if any of you ever looked at that, but you can get all kinds of overlays and look at your parcel boundaries. Prior to the statewide parcel mapping project, it was woefully out of date. I remember looking at mine, and it didn't show a subdivision that had happened, you know, the Cressy lot that I bought where my sugar house wasn't even on there like five years, you know, later. But now it's pretty up to date because the state has digitized all that, made all that GIS, so you can get, anybody with a computer can get access to that mapping, all those overlays, the parcel data, the assessment, because it's linked to the grand list data. What is not out there yet is the assessment data, the kind of details of how many bedrooms, how many square feet your house is, pictures of your house, a sketch of your house. Some towns have made that available, and little itty-bitty Proctor and Pollet with 700 parcels or so apiece, they both have, they have CAI, who is the mapper that we're tentatively going with. We're not obligated to do that. We are for this year because they bought out Dean's contract, but we have GIS mapping there. So, if I'm, and Mendon also has a similar setup in the town of Mendon. I'm trying to think of any other neighboring towns in Rutland County. Anyway, those three, you can look at them if you want an example of that. It's very convenient for a taxpayer, for a Realtor, for an appraiser. When I'm doing a bank appraisal, I can go on to one of those websites and get an eight-and-a-half by 11 printout of the map with the parcel boundaries, different overlays like floodplain or whatever, if I want to do that, right on there, and get an abbreviated lister card so I can get the sketch.
When you say make it available, it's already available to somebody willing to walk into the town office and ask for it, right?
Correct. It is public records.
We're just talking about convenience.
Yes, yes. It's the convenience factor, and I suppose, you know, I mean, I understand the privacy concern. You know, the more, the more available it is, I suppose the more available that is for marketers to get information, you know, they find out your, you know, your property has a horse barn, and all of a sudden, you get all kinds of spam selling you horse stuff or what, you know, or, you know, other, you know, marketing kinds of reasons that it might be used for that. But those people that are aggressive and want that information are getting it anyway. And what it does save for little towns like Proctor and Pollet is they don't have to have somebody on staff to be handing out those lister cards, which is a fair amount of our time here in Pittsburgh. Linda does that quite a bit. You have the kiosk in the town clerk's office, so that makes that fairly easy. But again, during COVID, you know, I used up some of the town's hours, as did Linda, with emailing these because people weren't coming into the office, so that would save that. But it would save that, but it's a garbage-in, garbage-out kind of thing. There's a lot of work to get that all up on the web and get that in the GIS. So, I think I'll kind of rest on that and maybe leave you to think about that, about the privacy concerns and the benefits versus negatives to that, and, you know, table that for down the road, because my priority, and my priority for time, is to get the conversion to the new version of Vision done. And I don't know if you want me to highlight some things from the memo, or I can tell you a quick, quick story. Last Thursday, when I was in, I spun my wheels for pretty much the whole day. I managed to find stuff to do, but Vision was unavailable all day, and my heart was in my throat because I thought, sure, it was that old server had died, and where were we going to be, have to construct this database for a backup? So, it turned out not to be that dire, but Vincent from Vermont Digital has warned me that that old server, we were required, because we have an older version of the Vision software, we had to keep our old server, even though we upgraded everything else and moved it to a new server, we had to keep the old one. And so, the old one, with any computer stuff, they're three or four years old, they're outdated and past their prime. So, we're living on borrowed time with that, and there is the hassle factor of, you know, when something went wrong like that, I called Vermont Digital, waited for them, I called Vision, waited for them, and then waited for them to convey information to Vermont Digital, and, you know, and a day later, we were back up and running.
But it's duct tape and baling wire that's holding it together?
Yeah, I don't know. Maybe Vermont Digital would say it's a little more elegant than that, but, yeah, I don't know. Maybe, maybe it is. There are a number of reasons why it's time. That server being at the end of its life is one of them. This time of year is really the only time of year that we can entertain it in an assessor's office to do that kind of a conversion, because we know we're going to be down for a week, and it could be longer than that if we run into any bumps in the road with this. And the state is coming out with new grand list software. That's going to be happening in 2022, so we've got only a year to ramp up for that. And this older software is not as smooth with exporting stuff to the grand list software. Prior to my being here, I guess the listers were doing double data entry, which is a tremendous waste of time, and anytime you type something twice, you run the risk of typing it differently those two different times. So, they were doing that. They would, you know, add a shed or a garage to somebody's property, calculate a new value, and then have to manually enter that in memory. So, they were spending a lot of time, and I was able to get an extract from Vision 6 so that I did all my work in Vision and then rolled that to the grand list software, all the new owner names and new values. And that ended up working fairly well, but it doesn't go nearly as smoothly as it does with the Vision 8 software I have in West Rutland. That went without a hitch this year. It was, you know, an hour or something versus a day I spent working on it here. So, there's that reason, compatibility with everything else that's out there. It'll frankly save my time because I won't, I won't be having to, when I go from West Rutland to Pittsburgh, even though it's the same program, it's a different version. The sketching is different, a lot of the options and the menus are different, so it'll streamline that time for me. And also, when you call tech support, Vision has kind of gotten rid of Vision 6, so sometimes we have to go through three or four techies before we find one that still remembers the old software, you know, because they've only been there for two years. They don't know the older, the older version of it. So, for all those reasons, you know, and I know it's a bit of money, and it will take some of my time. It's hard for me to predict what that'll take to get this done, but I don't think an inordinate amount of time. They're really promising to convert everything, soup to nuts, and actually a little bit better than we had it before, where they're going to give us PDFs of previous years. If only the listers had saved them in the last two years, I would be able to have right in the program a picture of the assessor card as it existed in 2019, 2020, 2018, et cetera, going back to the reappraisal, which sometimes you really need that if you're at a BCA appeal or if a particularly contentious taxpayer, not to mention anybody by name-
We don't have any of those, do we?
... wants to know like every nuance of the history of how many times the listers have been out, and what was the value then versus now, and, yeah, 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 yeah. It's all public record, and we have to give those answers. So, anyway, it will be a lot better system for us to do. We're proposing to do that the first week of October, which would be ideal time-wise for us to get that done. And the cost of it is $10,000 for the conversion.
You said in 2022, the state is changing their programs. Is Vision 8 going to work with that change, as far as you know?
Yes, and I believe it's going to work a heck of a lot better than Vision 6 ever will, because basically, basically, the company Vision is phasing out that older version. That's what software companies do, is, is once they come out with a new version, they gradually phase the other one out and encourage- phase the other one out and encourage all their customers to move to the new version. So that's kind of where we're at. And I do know that Vision has been in contact with Axiomatic, who is the new vendor for the state grand list software, and they're already working on how those two programs can communicate together. So I think they, Vision has enough of a stake in Vermont that they're going to, they're going to make this pretty seamless. And I'm on a committee with PVR and trying to encourage Vision to make sure that they don't reinvent the wheel every time they do something in Vermont, because we do have a few taxation laws that are a little bit idiosyncratic and a little bit cumbersome, like our current use is a ginormous pain. It really is. It takes a lot of hours to get current use calculations done. So once you get that streamlined, it's the same process I have to follow in West Rutland as I do in Pittsburgh. So again, to have the same software, I'm dealing with the same process. So I don't know how much more detail you want.
I guess I'd ask about funding. We do have a reserve fund called reappraisal fund. There's as of today, $154,878 in it. Can those funds be used for an upgrade of our software like you're proposing?
Absolutely. Whenever we've asked PVR about whether it's okay to use.
That's the state.
Yeah, the state property valuation review, the tax department. Whenever we've asked them if it's kosher to use those funds, so those funds are, unless the town has added to it with their own funding from taxpayers, we get, I think it's up to 850 a parcel for this reappraisal fund every year. So if you, the theory is if you did a reappraisal at least every 10 years, you would probably have enough money in that fund to do that.
Last appraisal we had about three years ago, I think cost was about $90,000, $100,000. So we're in pretty good shape there.
Yeah, hopefully, you know, I can't say whether prices for reappraisals will continue to go up or not, but the price of that reappraisal fund has gone up accordingly. But anyway, the state has always said, when we've asked, that if you, if you use it for other purposes, that's fine, that's, you know, it's your money that's been given to the towns. And I think this is in the interest of reappraisal looking down the road, as would be GIS mapping, if you wanted to consider that, to use reappraisal funds for that. I think that would be equally kosher.
What about the second cost you mentioned, the annual servicing?
Uh, the annual service, I think that you probably, probably is more general fund, but you know, the state isn't going to police this. Their attitude is simply that if you spend it on other stuff and you drain those funds and then you're ordered to do a reappraisal, don't come crying to PVR that you don't have money to do a reappraisal. So that's their position on it. But I think the annual fees are probably.
That should be a budget item.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Improvements to tax mapping, which would, GIS would be, would be kosher under the reappraisal fund. As would honestly my time in working on the tax maps of getting them updated. One of the things that's nice to have in GIS mapping is, say you have a parcel that is actually comprised of five deeds, like mine is. You want your map to reflect that because from an assessment point of view and from a, for the perspective of if you want to subdivide it, you want that on the record that I have those five lots, there are five separately deeded parcels. So in fair game, the town of Pittsburgh could assess those as of their highest and best use for those five individual lots, because I could sell any one of them at any time separately that I wanted to. So you want to have that information in your GIS map for a lot of reasons. It's in the taxpayers' interest too, not just ours. Taxpayers have had concerns for years with, with the risk of the contiguous parcel rule where the state tells us, it's in the legislation, that we have to combine parcels that are physically contiguous, the boundaries touch even across the divided highway, and they're under the same ownership, you have to combine them on one tax bill. And so I've had many, many taxpayers saying to me over the year, no, I don't want you to do that, please don't combine them, because then it might impact my ability to sell them separately down the road.
I know, one person who keeps asking us about that.
I've always told people, no, that it shouldn't, it's a law about the tax bill and the parceling. However, when I went to swap land with my sister Steph, darned if Dean Russell hadn't omitted one of my little dotty lines. So I don't know if you remember that one, but I had to explain it over and over and go back to old maps and show, show the planning commission that it really was, it wasn't the subdivision that it looked like on the map, it was the separate parcels. Anyway, long, long story short, it is, it does behoove both the town and the taxpayer to keep that information up to date. And I, I don't know, because I wasn't here when they did it, I don't know whether Dean Russell gave that information to the statewide parcel mapping. I don't think it's up to date because I don't think your parcels have been kept up to date for inactive parcels. So in other words, to keep that, you've got to keep that data in there. So you've got to have five parcels for Lisa Wright with four of them inactive and one of them being the active main parcel.
I think we're in danger of getting into the weeds beyond.
Uh, yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'll step back from the tech geek, but there's a lot to it. And it, it's all, all of my job is data. It's about data and keeping, keeping that up to date. And so that's what the GIS mapping is all about. You don't want to go to GIS if your maps are wrong, substantially wrong.
This new system, it looks like there's an annual fee, there's a service fee, and there's a maintenance fee.
Yes, we have been paying an annual fee all along. The cloud service is a new fee that I'm proposing. I mean, we could potentially, I'm still trying to get a straight answer on whether that is fully compatible to put Vision 8 on our new server, but that is likely could be done. But there I'm in the same situation where we'd have to, A, buy additional licensing to run the, trying not to be too techie, to run the software that needs to run the Vision software. If you, if you have a cloud subscription, Vision covers all of that because they have it all on their own servers. They also do backups for you. They, any updates are done automatically. When you need to get support, they can go right into the database because they have it right there. So there are a lot of advantages. That's what we have in West Rutland. So that is an additional 2,500 a year. And for some reason, I don't know whether, maybe John managed to, managed to get a deal with Vision when they did the reappraisal, because we've been paying.
John Ujier.
John Ujier, yeah, yeah, well, unless you did, but I guess you'd probably remember if you had. We've been managing to pay Vision for a one user license and to my knowledge, we've always had three or four users of the program. So maybe that was a deal that they brokered with him when they did the reappraisal, it's very possible. You know, so that's, the cat's out of the bag now. I tried to negotiate that down a little bit and there's still may possibly a little wiggle room where I'm talking about another feature. And then there is a GIS option that we have been paying for, that if we're going to go with GIS mapping through our tax mapper, I don't think we should pay for both. So that's a decision, but I'd hate to give it up if we have it and it's enabled and we're not going to go with the other, because it's at least nice to have for me in-house. John Ujier was able to do things like if zoning or planning commission wanted to get a list of a butters, that mapping program would let him very easily get names and addresses for budding owners.
It sounds like this up-to-date system would make it easier and more efficient for you and everybody else. Does that boil down to maybe some savings in costs of operating by having that new system, which?
That is the hope. It would certainly streamline, like I said, the, avoiding the manual data entry. We won't be doing that anymore.
It would make it easier for whoever, like you or whoever's.
Exactly, yeah.
Hopefully they would, could accumulate a little bit of savings there so it kind of helps to offset.
Yeah, no promises, because I come in here every Thursday. I have, I have this idea of I'm going to get to X, Y, and Z and there's.
I can see Hank's gears turning because you've been given promises in the past from the lister's office.
I had no comment.
She's too smart.
No, I can't.
There's probably chances of rules and regulations on the state's behalf and it will change it, adds new hassle to the whole thing.
Well, invariably, yes, yes. I'm sure they're cooking up something in Montpelier right now to make more work for us.
If the CLA is in good shape, it prolongs the appraisal process. It can.
Absolutely.
Or used to be able to, I'm not sure whether it still does.
It does, no, you're absolutely right, Joe. It absolutely does. There's another measure that can sometimes kick off the need for a reappraisal and, but you know, I won't get all techie about that, but.
With a system that's functioning well and is up to date and that could very well benefit the fact that we might not have to do a reappraisal quite as often.
Again, I wouldn't dare promise you that with what's going on with the market right now. Who knows? You know, talk to me next month, talk to me in six months, talk to me after the election. I mean, right now, the market is bananas. People are buying properties sight unseen. It's like after 9/11, people are wanting to have an option to get out of city. You can't blame them. If I was trapped in a New York City apartment during COVID, I would have been making my escape plan right away.
Bet you ten up in the park.
I would have done something.
What's to decide?
All right, so it sounds like this Vision 8 is something that we, whether we want to or not, is something we need to do and should do. So I will make the motion that we take the money out of our reappraisal fund to get us up to date or move us from Vision 6 to Vision 8.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? Hold the paper, say aye.
Aye.
Hold the phone, say no. There are no no's, it's unanimous.
I guess the other question is the annual fees, which I think you're buying into when you get to the vision, right?
Yeah, yeah. We have been paying an annual fee, we've just been paying the 4,500 as opposed to the higher amount, yeah.
So the vision, the vision change with all that goes with it.
That's right.
Yeah, as outlined in the memo and.
And then for future, we'll talk about town policy, about accessing all the elements of the lister cards remotely, electronically, and we'll also talk about GPS GIS.
Yep. Let me know when you, when you want to put that on an agenda. I don't think we're in any.
Yeah, and it might depend on when you get further input from your contractor.
Exactly.
Well, I think we need to get Vision 8 up and running, you know, and not working before we look at any of these other programs.
That's enough work for me right now. Thanks, Dave.
Well, it is, it's like fixing a car, you don't change two things at once.
No, 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 no. Only if there was free money from the state to have done it, I would have advocated signing a contract and getting that moving.
I think the last thing we have to do before we move to the session is to acknowledge the financial management questionnaire that's been filled out and signed by, one by Helen,
Yeah, Helen and Liz.
And one by Pat.
They do this every year in anticipation of the audit. They just do a questionnaire for the auditor in which they give accurate information and all you have to do is confirm that you've received it. I think you can squeeze them all on there if you would, for each of the pages. I marked them all individually.
But we still haven't discussed the dispatch.
You guys sat with me?
Thanks very much.
Thank you so much for your time. Have a good night.
When you've got the money, that's when you read quickly.
Yeah.
Have a good night.
Do you think?
We're almost on overtime.
I know.
We're going to burn it all, aren't we?
Yeah, it is. Quite good on there tonight.
Yeah.
Well, we've really done well then.
Yeah, that's good.
Spent a lot of money.
You hear from me?
That's the grease that helps the gears.
That is.
Apparently it's the coming thing in the future, this new system pretty much.
Yeah, it's like planned obsolescence, you know? There's always a new device or a new software that works better, or at least they say it does, so they can charge more for the replacement.
Until they make a better. Which they're working on already.
I missed one too.
You didn't listen.
We'll be quiet. I'm sure you're going to holler at me.
Yeah, not much gets by you, does it?
Yeah, I don't want phone calls tomorrow.
I think you signed your last official document in the June meeting. You open session?
Well, we've got one more.
Dispatching, we didn't finish that conversation when Lisa came in. You can accomplish much about it tonight, but just discuss it. Chief Warful gave me the material I gave you, which says that starting in the next budget year, we might have to start paying an annual fee to have dispatch service. And they've broken that down based on a per-call cost that they have calculated. Pittsburgh would be about $15,000 a year eventually at the full value, but they would ease into it 25% one year, then 50% the next year. On the one hand, this document looks like they're well down the road toward cranking this policy and out. However, Chief Warful says that people like Butch say shouting isn't over in Montpelier and things could definitely change significantly. So I wouldn't be too alarmed about it, but I wanted you to be aware of what the worst-case scenario might look like.
And they're not talking 15,000, they're talking 33,000 because it's individual fire and police, it's not just one.
I've only seen the police.
No, I've got the fire here too, so that's on here too. 33,158, that's right.
Okay, well, thank you for that. Okay, thank you for that.
This is state regulation.
Yeah, that's a state mandate to start charging for the service they provide.
Even though you have your own police department, you're still hooked.
Right.
For those costs.
Right.
Now, how many services does our police department provide for the state, like sex offenders and for things like that that we don't charge?
Chief Warful, Chief Warful mentioned that to me, that some of the local, at least law enforcement agencies that do things for the state might want to make a counterproposal factoring in those costs. I don't know how seriously they would take it, but it certainly doesn't hurt to have the conversation. But I think we probably, I think we probably need to hear more from Butch.
We are doing things for them, so it's not like this is costing them as much as they think it is because there's stuff they're getting for free.
Yeah, on the other hand, I can tell you, I was in on a lot of this stuff years past when they did away with the dispatch center here in Rutland. They're going to base it, if you come back with that, they're going to tell you, well, okay, we will bill Pittsburgh for the police calls that we handle while your people are not on call. So it's a whole big mess right now. It'll eventually come out, but. It'll eventually come out, but like John said, I wouldn't get too upset, but you want to start building a kitty right now. I think this next year, you need to put some money in there because it's going to hit us without a doubt. They've been telling us for the last five years, prepare yourself.
Yeah. So we'll try to follow up with Butch and get a temperature check from him as to how serious we should take it and when we think this might get implemented.
Okay, now we're done.
Okay.